Good evening. This is Tuesday, February 8, 2022, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. It is 5:30. I will call the meeting to order and I will ask that we call the roll. Mrs. Hostler, could you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Arvinitis?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
I'm here.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes, here.
And Mrs. Hostler, I'm here as well.
So we have four board members present, three absent at the moment. Could I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
I move that the Board of Education adjourn to closed session at 5:30 p.m. to discuss matters relating to the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, and the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, and the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, and litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Hostler, second by Mrs. Arvinitis. Mrs. Hostler, do you want to call the vote?
Sure. Mrs. Arvinitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Caporio?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Okay. Four yeses, no nays, three absent. The board is in closed session.[160.94]
Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, February 8th, 2022 regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. We have five board members present, two absent, and the board has been in closed session since 5:30 this evening. Uh, we do ask if you need one, there are masks available uh out in the hallway. And um I would like to begin tonight's meeting uh just with a moment for us to be thankful and grateful. I want to take a minute and thank our students for showing up and navigating cha- a changing landscape. And um their ongoing respectfulness to each other and modeling uh for the rest of us. What uh persevering looks like when things aren't always maybe how you wanted them. Uh, I'd also really like to thank our teachers. We know that there was a snowstorm to navigate and another sort of storm, so to speak, in some changes that happened over the weekend. And we are really appreciative that they are continuing to support our students for giving it their all in our classrooms. And even um at times when it may feel uncomfortable or they may be nervous, they are continuing on. And we are incredibly grateful for their perseverance to continue educating our students. I'd also like to thank our leaders. We have building leaders and we have leaders in this room who worked all weekend, who've been working in the evenings to ensure that our operations continue and also that the needs of our students are supported. As things change, different families have different needs and they have been navigating those, communicating with their staff, communicating with their families. And it is really appreciated that that extra time and care and consideration is being given. And finally, I'd like to take a minute and thank our superintendent. She has been working tirelessly to make sure that all the groups in our community, our entire community, the board, the principals, the district administration, our families, that everyone is communicated with. And that their needs are being heard and addressed as best we can. And it takes time to support that many people and to lead during a time that is challenging. How's that? So I just want to thank you for that. And I also want to thank our community for even um when things maybe haven't felt that they're what you want. We are being respectful and I hope that will continue tonight, that we will respect each other even as we listen to different views and on various topics. So um with that moment of gratitude, I hope you can all just be grateful that we have an amazing community and school district, that our kids get to attend every day. Tonight, we're going to have hard conversations and do the hard work of that school district. And I'm glad you're here to listen, to observe, for those of you who are going to speak. We'll be thoughtfully listening to what you have to share. And with that, let's say the pledge and get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and evergreen.
All right, so we continue to be livestreamed and that's available on the district website. And we have two spotlight and recognitions tonight. We are going to first hear from our principal at Madison. Where is she? Oh, there she is. Is it Dr.? Dr. Condrat. Wanted to make sure I had that correct.
Thank you, it's okay.
So, welcome.
I also have a couple of other people that are presenting, so I want to say hi and good evening to everybody on the Board of Education and our other colleagues in the district and these community members that get to hear my presentation. It's so nice to be heard at the same time, too. So we are happy to be here tonight and to celebrate all the great things that are happening at Madison. I'm Susan Condrat and I'm the principal over at the Madison Early Childhood Center. And helping me celebrate tonight and present are Sarah Pappas, who is one of my amazing and outstanding um early childhood teachers. And then I also have Michelle Oberlin, who's our instructional coach. So with um the the first place that I wanted to start is kind of, what is Madison? This is Madison, it's kind of, at Madison, we, all of our staff contribute to what we wanted to celebrate with you this evening. Um, our motto at Madison is kind of love leads to learning, which means that through self-love, a love for students, it equals learning for all students at the same time, too. So, beginning in the 2018 and 19 school year, Madison's BLT collaborated on this motto, which is supportive of the D205 belief statements at the same time. This motto grounds our work um and the things that we really do really well here at Madison. Um, when collaborating about what to celebrate, we determined that we kind of have three areas that we wanted to highlight for you. And um those areas are demonstrated through our curriculum and instruction, our community outreach, and our collaborative relationships that we have present. Um, the things that we are celebrating have been demonstrated and we'd like to expand upon those areas and celebrate those with you this evening and the innovative work that happens every day on a daily basis as we go through and work with kids at and all of our mini dukes at Madison. So Sarah Pappas is up next and she will highlight some of our innovative curriculum and instructional practices that have benefited students that we've been worked hard to put in place now at Madison for over the last four years.
Thank you. So when I think about um curriculum and instruction and Madison, um, you know, I just have to say that. Big shout out to our staff at Madison who are always willing to reflect and take risks and collaborate. So as Susan has mentioned, over the past few years, we identified some shifts that we really wanted to make in our instruction to really provide the best quality and developmentally appropriate instruction for all of the learners. And so here's some of it in action. Um, you can see uh the project approach is basically project-based learning at uh its youngest age group, which is at Madison. We've really kind of made a shift in our instruction to utilizing this approach, um, which kind of is an in-depth investigation of a topic. And some of the classes there were investigating bunnies and fishing and squirrels. The whole point is kind of that the topic is something of interest to the children and something that that can be observable by all of them. Um, something else that we work really hard on at Madison is our interdisciplinary instruction. So um when we teach whole group, we really do all the things. We work on math, we work on literacy, we work um science, SCL, so um that's what we want to do. So we do have just a couple of quick snippets to just kind of show some of that interdisciplinary instruction in action. Um, this first one kind of embeds a combination of literacy and SCL and gross motor. A little example of what we do during a circle. Always fun. Um, and then a second, just really quick uh video, also just kind of shows how we're integrating um. Um, and then on the left, we just have um some examples of how we social motioning daily throughout um the school, which was another shift that we really wanted to focus on together. Um, all of the students have had experience in the classrooms using calm classroom. We've implemented calming corners into our classrooms. We utilize the second step curriculum along with push and support from our social workers. And all of the students are also very familiar with zones of regulation, which helps them regulate um their bodies and their emotions. And um all of this SCL work is done like through true collaboration with our social workers or educational therapists, our speech pathologists and our uh paraprofessionals who are always supporting the students in these areas as well. And so then we have just a couple of examples, too, of our ELA instruction where we have worked really hard to integrate story champs into our classrooms. And our English language teacher pushes in to support the classrooms during that. And we've seen some really, really great um gains in the children's ability to, with their literacy comprehension and just preparation for kindergarten in general. And we also utilize um comprehensive literacy for all in our self-contained classrooms to make sure that all of our learners are receiving the best instruction that's available for them. Um, and then, let's see. Yeah, the bottom right just is an example of how we utilize CISA as well to stay in constant communication with families. But we also add pictures that share the learning standards that we're working on in the classroom so the parents know kind of what we're working on and how they can support their students at home as too. Then next will be Michelle? Nope, Susan again, sorry.
Next, it's me again. So um the next area that we wanted to kind of highlight for you are some awards and recognition at the same time, too. Um, I, you are very lucky to go ahead and have such an amazing program here at Madison. We go ahead and um we're recognized with one of the highest awards and recognition for our quality of programming services, which is the gold circle of quality. They, they came out and do an in-depth and stu- study of our programs, spend about a week with us every two or three years and spend a whole half a day observing a whole session in almost all of our classrooms to determine the level of quality that's happening. And so we've received that gold circle of quality for multiple years. We've also received the award of excellence for linguistically and culturally appropriate um programming as so, as well, which is something that we've worked really hard at because we have a very diverse population at Madison and offer all types of programming at the same time, too, from dual language to serving 15 different or more languages in a school year at the same time, too, and supporting all kinds of students. And finally, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, too, but you also had a published educator here with you at the same time. And that is Sarah Pappas. She, um, some of her project approach work has been recognized on the Illinois Early Learning Project. Um, for her example of project work, last work she did a, last school year she did a project on squirrels, which during a, during the school year of in and out of the classroom was the perfect study to do. And she wrote up that proposal and it was shown as an example and a model of what to do when you're trying to implement project instruction for other early educators throughout the state. So, thank you, Sarah. So she was, so you have a real great person going ahead here. Uh, the next thing I wanted to go ahead and also highlight, too, is our community outreach. So Madison works really hard on our community outreach at the same time, too. And that's largely in part to the efforts of our parent educator, Michelle Markovic. I think she is here with us tonight at the same time, too. So she has um, she works tirelessly with all, with staff, collaborating with staff, with parents and with members of the community to form multiple community providers to, to bring groups together to collaborate and provide resources and support our families that are both low-income families and, and everything else that she does throughout the year. So um we've expanded our community outreach greatly over the last four years. And many of our students and their families have also benefited from being involved in both the giving and receiving of the support at the same time, too. Madison offers regular monthly parent education meetings, such as parent cafes where parents can get together and discuss issues and um solve problems together. Um, along with presentations by staff and community experts in the area of how to expand communication with your child. in the area of how to expand communication with your child, assist in SEL development and sensory regulation, manage routines at home to reduce challenging behaviors with visual supports, and the importance of play and how to set up your home to encourage successful planning, are just a few topics that we cover on a regular basis. Family events. We were able to provide wonderful family events. I had to rethink a little bit how we do family events this year, but this year we had an outdoor Fall Fest, and a Winter Wonderland Walk for families. And our Fall Fest was filled with crafts, snacks, and fun for students. And we also always work out to expand our community outreach, and have the Elmhurst Fire Department and the Elmhurst Library. We're also at our events to go ahead and kind of show the fire truck, talk about fire safety, and provide some goodies for the kids at the same time, and read stories and talk about the events that are happening at the library. And then, we also had a petting zoo that was there for the kids. So, it was a fun outdoor event, some snacks and some crafts. That was really fun for all the parents to be able to attend. And that's the picture kind of down on the left-hand side. And then, the other picture that's on there is of our Winter Wonderland Walk. And this year, we had, we lit up Madison all around the block, and had collaborated to create genderbread houses in each one of the classrooms that the kids created and made themselves. And they were showcased, and people could come out to see those. And then, also hear your carolers that were there, the Elmhurst Fire Department that were there with lights, and again, the library that was there to go ahead and promote resources. And we worked really hard to collaborate with our PTA on this event. And they also provided goodies at the end of the walk at the same time, for goodie bags for the families to take home at the end of our walk. So, and Dr. Campbell and Dr. Rubenstein were able to join us for that event. And it was a fun time to have them present with us that night. I also wanted to go ahead and talk a little bit, again, about all the different supports that we have in place for collaborating not only with our staff, but also with community resources and parents to go ahead and expand on those programs. And so, through Michelle's assistance, at the same time, too, we now have a Bells Collaboration, which is a Bensonville-Elmhurst Early Learning Supporters Collaboration. We also have, she's also a part of the Elmhurst Resource Coalition, the DuPage Early Childhood Collaboration, the Family Engagement Collaboration, which is a statewide ISB programs that are focused on student-centered decision-makings and improving services for families. And that wouldn't have been possible without Michelle's tireless work. And she is usually present at most We Pop-Up events and other things throughout the community. So, we're kind of all over the place to go ahead and help support our families at the same time, as well. Finally, our instructional work is highlighted kind of through the project approach that we use. And you can see that in the bottom right-hand corner. This is a project that was done by Katie Delaney's class last school year. She did, started out with a project on pets, and then started to talk about how we could go ahead and service and provide, solving problems for pets that are sick. So, with that, she got, she was in touch with the Live Like Rue charity, which goes ahead and supports dogs and cats with different sorts of, to go ahead and help them in their final end-of-life kind of ways, to go ahead and support them. And so, she worked with them. And inside the classroom, the kids made toys and dog treats, and created a video to go ahead and share with everybody to, in order to raise funds. And they were able, through their project, to donate over $900 to the Live Like Rue charity at the same time, too. So, Katie Delaney is here with us as well. And if you want to play that video that's on the bottom, you can see kind of what she's talking about.
We're making dog treats.
For who?
The animal shelter.
What's the name of the animal shelter?
What's the name of the animal shelter?
We're Live Like Rue.
Why are we helping them?
Because they're sick.
Who's sick?
The dog. And then, they'll pay us money, so we can get animal shelter cards.
So, as you can see, it's the beginning of understanding for investigating and going ahead and solving a problem and helping out in the community that is done and celebrated so much through the project work that we've worked so hard to put in place, where the kids really get invested in a unit of study and answer questions and find out answers, and retain their curiosity that is present in most young kids at all times. So, with that, I will let go ahead, I will now let Michelle Oberlin talk a little bit about our collaborative relationships.
So, our collaborative relationships at Madison is something that we are extremely proud of. In a lot of different areas, we're able to showcase this within the model of the co-teaching and push-in services. At Madison, most schools and the district all have their social workers, and they have their school psychologists and their English language teachers, and everyone who's able to help and push in. But at Madison, we really, really, really work on a push-in model. And we have a lot of co-teaching that happens, which we feel like just benefits all the students in so many different ways, because everyone is an expert in their own field. And when you can work together, it's just going to benefit all the students in their, whether or not they need direct minutes or anything like that. So, a couple of the videos that we have at the top, the first one is with our EL teacher Gina Liscotti and a teacher Teresa, who are co-teaching on a Kagan strategy for students of our English language learners.
Mix, pair, share. When we do mix, pair, share, there is a question. We stop and think. The question today is, what would you do with a baby? What would you do with a baby? Everybody gets a sheet. And then, we stand up and mix it up, mix it up, mix it up, and freeze. We hold a friend's hand. We say, we say, hi. Hi. We ask and answer questions, and then we hi. Bye. Can you friends watch Miss Gina and Miss Teresa doing this? Are you ready? Here's a paper, Miss Teresa, so you're ready. The question is, what would you do with a baby? I'm gonna mix it up, mix it up, mix it up, mix it up and freeze. Oh, I found a partner. Hi. Miss Teresa, what would you do with a baby?
I would give the baby a bottle.
Good idea, good idea.
What would you do with a baby?
I would. I would. Read the baby. So, that's how we do mix, pair, share.
So, as you can see as well from that video, too, the teachers collaborate to make sure that we have enough visual supports, we have enough gestural supports, and we're doing everything we can to hit all the different modalities of every type of learner. And that is created through that really deep collaborative relationship that we have developed at Madison. And then, there's just one more video as well of a speech pathologist pushing in. The other things that we like to highlight as well is knowing that our PSRP's are also a really big part of what makes Madison so special in the teaching there. We are fortunate that we do have a lot of assistants that are able to help manage everything in the classroom as well as teaching the students. And so, what we're able to do is we also have PSRP academies, in which we take information from the teachers or even the PSRP's themselves on information that they would like to learn that could better help them do their jobs. And we offer them monthly, just little academies for about 45 minutes of just topics that they would like to learn about. Weekly co-planning and co-teaching is very important. Our teachers make a point to really build in time to not just email each other in the hallway, but to sit down and genuinely talk about their lessons and the co-planning. And that's how we get such individualized group and work in small groups for all of our students, to make sure that, you know, they understand that they're bringing their expertise, whether it's as a speech path or the teacher into the classroom. We have highly effective PLCs. Our PLCs meet weekly. We have two teacher PLCs, one speech path PLC, and then our mental health, which is our social workers and psychs. Last year, the district had someone who came around to just kind of really work with our PLCs. And he gave us an amazing feedback about the highly effectiveness of the PLCs that we were demonstrated at Madison, which we're very proud of, to have someone else who came in and was able to demonstrate, see how well our teachers and our staff are able to collaborate with each other on a weekly basis, constantly making sure that we're in the best interest of the students. And then, we have our PTA and staff planned events that we work really hard in. Last year, we, you know, we tried to plant the seeds of kindness, so hopefully this sign looks very familiar to people, that you maybe got one in front of you. Really working hard to teach our students about kindness. And we really worked hard with the PTA with that, and we tried to teach our students about planting seeds of kindness.
Through those efforts with the PTA, we were also able to go ahead and raise funds to go ahead and support our first responders in the community at the same time, too. So, we were able to go ahead and provide breakfasts for the police department, and also for the fire department through the money that we raised for our kindness campaign at the same time, too. So, that's just, we do many events, and this is just a snippet kind of of everything. Okay, so I want to thank you for going ahead and letting us share a little bit about our collaboration and all the wonderful things that happen at Madison on a daily basis. This is just a snippet of things that happen. I want to thank you for the time tonight, and we hope this gave you a little bit of a glimpse into some of the things that Madison is most proud of in our areas of curriculum instruction, community outreach, and collaborative relationships. I'm thankful to have the opportunity to work with such an amazing group of people every single day. So, I have wonderful staff members that are out here in the audience at the same time. And if all of them can stand up, we can at least give them all a big round of applause for their work. Thank you so much, and that's it. We were able to start the night with a great celebratory event reminding us all of kindness and respect.
Thank you so much. You do amazing work, all of you, so thank you so much. Love the videos.
I just wanted to say thank you for that presentation. It was amazing. And Madison is just such a warm, welcoming environment for our youngest learners, and it's an amazing school. And my kids went there, so I can attest to the supports and resources that you offer to families, not only as, you know, for working through things at home, challenges you may be having, but also as they transition into kindergarten and onto our other schools. And it was invaluable for us. So, thank you for everything that you do there and for our community. Appreciate that.
Okay. So, thank you for that. And now, we're going to move on to Jefferson Elementary School. Dr. Pedraza.
Hello, everybody. So, I, I have a shorter presentation, and I'm not saying that to take away from anything from Madison, because that was incredible. And I feel like I could go and teach there, because I know so much about it. It was wonderfully, just thoughtful presentation. Everyone here absolutely loved it, it was lovely. I'm going to talk about our Tiger Buddies program at Jefferson. So, as we were reflecting on this school year and thinking about, you know, how can we start this year with our strong community, and really just building that sense of community after a year? That was, you know, really unusual. There were a lot of transitions. And we really wanted to start the year strong with our kids coming together and just feeling that Jefferson pride and that Jefferson love that we always have, that's grounded in tradition and grounded in our core values. So, in Tiger Buddies, we came up with this idea that students would meet in cross-grade level groupings, basically. And the big goals are that we would have students work together to better understand and live by our core values by fostering community, social-emotional growth, cultural awareness and empathy, and an understanding of the impact that we can have on the world. So, really, the idea is, three years ago, we kind of set this goal of unlimited growth and connection. And we have high academic standards at Jefferson, but we also want students, along with that, to have that paired high expectations for how we collaborate with one another, how we communicate with one another, how we're kind to one another. And so, we really want well-rounded students that kind of have it all. And so, we put these groups together, of these cross-grade level groups. And so, what happens is, we have 17 Tiger Buddy teams at Jefferson. And each team is comprised of a couple of students at each grade level. And then, we also have two teachers, so they're co-taught. And at the beginning of the year, the students were meeting twice a month. And they're meeting on Mondays, when the students don't have specials. So, it is not pulling away from anything. It's adding on to and really enhancing the curriculum. And so, we have a team that meets and plans based on what we're seeing in our social-emotional growth data, what we're seeing in classrooms anecdotally, what do we need to work on with our students. And so, our teams get together and they plan these lessons for our students. And it's just really wonderful and powerful, because we have an opportunity for mentoring. We have an opportunity to have students who are in like fifth grade work really closely with third graders, second graders, fourth graders. And the students, when you talk to them, they just talk so positively. So, here are some quotes from our students about what they think about Tiger Buddies from a smattering of grade levels. And you can take a look at those for a minute. I think the kindergartner quote says it all. Tiger Buddies makes me feel happy we get to be together. And that's really the idea of it, is really bringing everyone together. And students just having that consistency, that shared community, that feeling of belonging, and knowing that everything's wonderful, and we're just like learning and moving forward together. And so, each meeting follows a predictable structure. So, we always start out with a grateful heart. And we actually have these hearts covering our entire school. So, the students come in, and they write down a gratitude that they have, and they share that with their different buddies on the team. And it can range from such a wide variety of different things. And that also brings an opportunity for kids to connect with one another and say, oh, my gosh, I am so grateful as well that for Christmas this year, I got Pokemon, and I was super excited about it. And they just, you know, have conversations about so many different things. And so, these hearts are then strung around our entire building. So, if you walk into Jefferson, you kind of feel that love and that like community. After that, we always share a story that's grounded in a theme for the day. So, whether it is perseverance, whether it is kindness, whether we're looking at a growth mindset, all of those things tie in together, and they tie into the story. The students then play a team game. And again, that's building that team dynamic. And then, we always do a wrap-up together. And so, from that, we're really noticing that we're having these shared core values in the school. And so, when students are talking to one another, they're using that same language. And it's really, really built this wonderful collaborative culture. So, last month, which was actually the month before, we focused on generosity. And the students were reading and sharing Ordinary Mary's Extraordinary Good Deed by Emily Pearson. And it gave teams a starting place for meaningful discussions. So, in this story, one student does one thing, and as that gets passed on, it just grows and grows and builds and builds. And so, you really see the students doing small little bits of kindness and talking about, wow, how much that means to them. And they're seeing the impact of what they're doing and how that grows and builds. And then, some of the questions that we talked about was, what are some ways you can be generous at school? Try to think of some ways that don't include things. So, a lot of times, our students, we noticed when we were talking about generosity, we're like, well, I can give someone this actual thing, or it's involved with money. But they really recognize that there's generosity of time, there's just generosity of comments and the way we talk to one another. And it went much broader and much deeper because we have cross-grade level groupings. We've got fifth grader ideas, and we've got kindergartner ideas. And so, they're really stretched up. And then, again, our fifth graders are really mentoring those younger students. What can you do when you notice someone who is not feeling so great? So, again, building that, really that empathy, that group dynamic. So, really, it's grounded and fueled in SEL fun and community. And it's just really been a positive effect. We started out doing it twice a month. We ended up switching back to once, because we also have this really strong tradition at Jefferson of our fifth graders mentoring our kindergartners. And they have kindergarten and fifth grade buddies, and our fourth grade and first grade. And we wanted to honor that tradition as well. Jefferson is a school that's rich in traditions, and I absolutely love that. And so, we wanted to honor that, and we've gotten some feedback that that was important. And so, we added that in as well. So, we're continuing to work on all this, and just wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hope that maybe one time, we can come visit and see it in action.
That would be wonderful. We would absolutely love that. Thank you so much.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Pedraza. Okay. That is always the best part of the meeting. So, all right. We would like to give you an opportunity We would like to give you an opportunity for all the people that have signed up to speak. And to do that, it's going to need to stay orderly and respectful, so that we can move through and also, you know, have an opportunity to, you know, get to our business. So, I would just ask that, you know, we have an opportunity to be an example of a community that can have a hard conversation and have differing views in the room, and be respectful. Okay, so we are going to call people up, you know, with the random number generator here, and what I'd like to do is call two numbers, so we can have someone waiting and we can, you know, move through. You have up to three minutes, you don't have to use all three minutes, we have up to three minutes, and we have a timer who will tell you when you have 30 seconds left, and we ask that you wrap up, we'll call the next speaker. All right. We originally allocated 45 minutes, but I think due to the topics that I'm guessing most people are here to speak about, we'd like to listen to all 30 speakers. All right, so, speaker number one, or, I mean, sorry, the first speaker is...
Okay, number 16 is Kate Riley. And then number two will be our speaker after Kate, and that is Nathan Reese.
All right, go ahead and come up, I'm pretty sure the microphone's on, and...
Hello, my name is Kate Riley. I grew up in Elmhurst and went through the D-205 school system. While there were flaws, I felt confident enough in the education I received that my husband and I moved back here so our kids could also attend D-205. That said, we have homeschooled our three boys this entire year. We chose to do this despite paying the ridiculously high taxes for the good schools, because I was tired of seeing our little boys treated as pests. The disruptions to not only their education these last couple of years, but to their well-being and daily lives made it a clear choice for us. Let me give you an example. I was a children's librarian before I had kids. I did outreach, so I went to schools to promote reading programs, I went to preschools to do monthly storytimes, and I did a number of programs in-house. There is a magical experience that happens at every single one of these activities with young children. As you read to them, as a whole, the kids slowly move closer and closer. They, they would all be sitting in front of me at the beginning of the book, and by the end, I would have kids touching my shoes and my pant leg. They get so involved in the story that they need to feel you and get closer. It's truly magical. Now, my son, who was in kindergarten last year, was never allowed to move away from his desk. When the teacher read a book, maybe every other day when she wasn't showing YouTube videos to them, would put the book up on a screen, and my son, who was 10 to 15 feet away, would have to look down at his tablet to see the book. He was taught that he needed to stay away from everyone else, so, because he could get them sick. My perfectly healthy, sensitive little boy was taught an underlying message that he was dirty, and he could make other people sick, maybe even kill them. This year, my twin boys both have speech IEPs and go to Madison for very short speech lessons once a week. Up until yesterday, the kids and teachers wore masks for speech. Do you think there's been a lot of progress made this year in learning how to form sounds correctly? Not from these speech lessons. Now, yesterday was the first time my boys didn't wear their masks, and we walk up to find the teacher, not only in the cloth mask she's been wearing this entire time, but also an N95 mask under it. Double masked. I could barely hear or understand her. What are my boys going to learn from her in terms of speech? And again, what is the underlying lesson being taught here? Kids are unhealthy germ-spreaders. I'm glad the masks are optional now, but now more work needs to be done to repair all the damage that you all have inflicted on the kids. And these wishy-washy statements in the district emails that make it sound like you'll re-mask at the first chance you get, makes it clear that we are going to be homeschooling, at least until the next board election. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Nathan Reese.
Good evening, and thank you for providing an open forum for comment. I'm Nathan Reese, a product of this great, this great district, from Edison through York, and we currently have children at Edison and Sandberg. Let's first revisit and absorb what Judge Grishaw wrote last week. "The arbitrary method as to contact tracing and masking in general continue to raise fair questions as to the legality of executive orders in light of violations of healthy children's substantive due process rights. Statutory rights have attempted to be bypassed through the issuance of executive orders and emergency rules. This type of evil is exactly what the law was intended to constrain." So here we are, with a fair, respectful, and all-inclusive mask optional policy. This shift was long overdue. Nobody in this room made the decision to become engaged in education, to make decisions based on the easy route or the path of least resistance. But let's exactly look at what took place here. That's exactly what took place here over the last few months, arguably over a year. I'd consider the judge's decision a collective hall pass for all those here who decided not to locally govern our district, but to rather give in to a governor and ISB who continues to bully against the law school districts into complying with their wishes. An item of common concern now lies within the district email that came out Sunday evening. Quote, "Please be advised, this may change, this may change based on future court orders." You know what? No. This policy doesn't need to change. Don't heed to the obscene threats and pressure to follow executive orders or other rhetoric that flies in the face of your ability to local rule. Enough's enough. Take what this judge gave you and continue down a road that we all should be heading down, which is normalcy for our children, and to start a correction of the mental, self-esteem, speech, and myriad other deficiencies that are now plaguing our kids. If you think I'm exaggerating, you didn't witness kids breaking down with relief and jumping around in joy yesterday morning in a mask optional atmosphere. This is real. Don't go back to policies that had an administrator physically lifting up children's masks at Sandberg as they walked down the hall, avoiding them going a different direction in a different hallway, giving major detentions and obsessing more with mask enforcement instead of obsessing with their education.
30 seconds.
I coached dozen of kids on local sports teams and have always taught my players to keep the foot on the accelerator when you're doing the right thing. I truly hope we're on the same team in this room, so I'm pleading with you not to take a step back. Don't let the other team back in the game, no matter how hard they try and bully us around. Everyone here has a clear and distinct ability to local govern our school district and the mental health of our children. Please take the opportunity given by this court order and continue to do the right thing for our kids and the future of our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker.
Next, we have Nick Stanton. Nick Stanton. And on deck will be Guido Nardini.
Okay, no Nick Stanton, so we'll move on to Guido.
No, Nathan, that's Nate Stanton, he's right there, he's right there.
Sorry, it says Nick Stanton on my sheet here.
Well, they're up on the screen.
I think it was, just because there was applause. It's Nick Stanton is the name I have on the sheet, is next.
Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, that's a little low. Okay, hello, Board of Education. I'm here to speak to you as a student representing York High School. I would like to speak about an issue that has been on my mind for a really long time. I love my teachers at York High School. I talk with them on a daily basis, and we get along really well. In fact, I need to have this relationship with my teachers. Last year, that was not possible for me. I had to go to Timothy Christian last year because I, e-learning was not working for me. So, this year I came back to York because luckily you guys chose in-person learning. But if I had my mask below my nose, if I had it below my chin, teachers would scream, yell, I'd go to the dean's office. We would have major complications with that. I've even been threatened by some teachers with more extreme measures. So, I would like to thank you for giving us a choice to wear a mask or not, and giving students N95 masks if they don't feel safe. So there's like, two sides to the story. But even though masks are not required, we still have a problem to resolve. This week, a student in a class wasn't wearing a mask, all the other students were. The teacher decided to open all the windows in the classroom, all the students froze because one student was not wearing a mask. What's the saddest part about all this? We are focusing on masks at this board meeting, but there's other issues at York that we have to cause and solve that are causing more division to this. Want to know what some of these issues are? That's not going to be brought up anywhere else. At least in all my classes, there's two kids that skip class every single day. You will find circles in the bathroom where all these people smoke weed, there's, can be up to dozen people smoking weed in the bathroom at one time, all the toilets are clogged. Do the administrator staff care about this? No. They care more about us wearing masks, they care more about teaching us things that, um, teaching us things like, um...
30 seconds.
Okay, um, teaching us things like, um, sorry, teaching us things such as wearing our masks, we could kill people if we don't have our masks on, et cetera. I've been told that before in the classroom. So to conclude, why are teachers focusing on issues such as keeping us safe from COVID and telling us we are killing people but not putting our masks on? They are focused on these issues and not teaching real curriculum. I have also some personal experiences to share from my classes.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wait, just one more second. I'm scared that my teachers will take points away from my grade, so I would prefer for this not to like, um...
Thank you.
...happen, but thank you.
Next speaker, Guido Nardini.
My name's Guido Nardini, I'm a product of District 205, Jefferson, Sandberg, York. I'm here to thank the board and thank the teachers. We're a community, and we've been pretty divided, and there's no denying that this is a pretty special time. We've never had a global pandemic to go through, so I understand everybody's tension is high, and I understand that when you're dealing with the resources of your child, that's your most important resource, and you're pretty damn invested. I was concerned to hear just now somebody say, "What's that teacher's name?" That strikes me as sort of surprising.
Should we know?
Is this your time, Paul?
Uh-uh. Hey.
Um, so here's what's going on. I appreciate that there was a rule in a past boardroom, in a past board meeting, that no specific names would be mentioned. Sorry, President Pforio. I'm here to speak on behalf of the teachers. Some of them don't feel safe. And there's a new group, there's a new website with a really good mission statement, that Epic, Elmhurst Parents for the Integrity of Curriculum, or Curricula. And it's a pretty great sort of gathering place of a bunch of ideas that a part of the community finds objectionable. And in one area, they have pictures and names of specific District 205 teachers. And, you know, there isn't a target on them, but they're being vilified as teaching something that, an Epoch Times article, a Falingang newspaper's article about Howard Zinn and about SEL and how it has an occult component. It doesn't have an occult component. But, uh, so, there are teachers named specifically, and really sort of demonized. Now, that hasn't really inspired any violence, but violence gets inspired by stuff like that. So, we're all a community, and we're clearly on different sides, but I implore whoever's running that site, fight the fight, stick to your guns, but take her name off of it, don't...
30 seconds.
Take her name off of it in the name of community. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
Thank you. I'm number three, right? Lisa? Yeah, Lisa Woodward. And then Tanya, our next number was already, we already heard from number 16. I don't know if you can flip the numbers again, just so we can have our on-deck person. So number 27 is Jamie Esker-Schur, would be on deck. Thank you, Lisa.
Hi, I'm Lisa Woodward. I have two kids in District 205, eighth and fifth grade. My eighth grader is super shy. She was so nervous to go to school yesterday and not wear her mask. I told her that it's her choice, and I trust her decision. Yesterday, she made that choice not to wear her mask, and she came home with the biggest smile on her face. She told me how great it was to breathe again at school. Today, she told me how great it was to see her classmates' faces for the first time in two years. Two years. I mean, it's shocking. She even said that she felt it helped her learn better. This is a girl who has 100% in every single class, yet she felt it made her learn better because it allowed her to focus on learning and not on her mask and her inability to breathe. I'm here just to say thank you for following the law and allowing her to choose. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jamie. I have, three of my children are at District 205 schools, and just real quick, I just wanted to say thank you to all the school board members for giving parents a choice. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mandy Pachalski is next. Mandy Pachalski is next.
Good evening, Dr. Campbell, members of the board and Elmhurst community. My name is Mandy Pachalski. I have three kids, as you know, currently in D-205, and my husband is a product of D-205. Tonight, you might hear from members of a newer group called Epic, Elmhurst Parents for Integrity Curriculum. This group claims on their website and Facebook page to be a, quote, "local, parent-driven, nonpartisan organization," end quote. This group, like many across the nation, are serving to create outrage. It's about keeping people angry so they stay engaged and vote, and all of this is at the expense of our children and teachers. I feel it's important to call it out. One of the Facebook admins and creators is an Elmhurst alderman. Throughout the website and Facebook page are links to articles for politicians, all from the same political party. Let me read you a direct comment from their Facebook page. Quote, "We are not alone. South Dakota, Texas, and Virginia are states banning CRT. There's a lot of bad stuff on CRT laid out in this article. Epic has proven that time spent on privileged versus underprivileged versus core math, science, college prep, and history is universally bringing down our test scores and our property values. Join us as we work to fight D-205 and its mission of revisionist history," end quote. There are many articles and comments and programs like social-emotional learning that are, they're spreading misinformation about. One member and admin of Epic writes, quote, "Social-emotional learning programs are the psychological manipulation of children's values, morals, attitudes, worldview, based on the viewpoint of critical race theorists," end quote. I don't think after the presentation we just heard from the excellence that is occurring at Madison that it sounds anything of the sort. It's important to note that this group is targeting by name D-205 administrators and staff. That is uncalled for. Our teachers and administrators do not deserve this treatment. It has been a difficult two years for all of us, but none more than our frontline healthcare workers and our teachers. Political games have no place in our schools or on our board, not from either side of the aisle. To our teachers, our administrators, and our staff, we support you 1,000%, trust that the vast majority of this community stands with you. Thank you for your dedication to our children."
30 seconds.
Thank you. Next, we have Rick Mandago, and on deck will be Jennifer Hayes, please.
I know tonight I am not going to convince anyone of anything. The ideological sides have been drawn for years, we all know what they are, and we're just going to talk straight over people. My concern is how quickly this went about. I have a son who has special needs. His life is run through repetition and sameness, right? Anything that's out of that zone, he can't handle. It is an actual, you know, mental diagnosed condition, and we just, we just flipped the switch. There was no alternative made for this, there is no accommodation being made for him. Now, I understand that people have been upset for a long time, but I can only advocate for my son that this just totally wrecked him for the last couple of days. Okay, so, I understand that anecdotes are not the same as data, so I'd like to remind you, just because you keep saying the same thing, it doesn't mean that that is backed up by anything, and that there are actually people who are upset about this. Now, for two things, for snow days and for this, there have been no alternatives made, there have been no accommodations made. So it seems like we're just kind of switching what some... So it seems like we're just kind of switching what some perceive as tyranny for one position to something else. There's no discussion being made. Just, I would like to know what we're doing for those kids who truly get bullied every day because they are different, who can't deal with these instantaneous changes and aren't getting provided any means to navigate this. Now, you can boo me if you want, I don't care. I have a son. I can say that I've been here for a billion years too. And it's true, I did the whole Elmhurst thing and then moved back when I had kids. It doesn't mean that you're more right. In my particular situation, this is a failure. I am not demanding that the world change for me because I don't like a particular ruling. I am not trying to bully other people by being like, why are the teachers still wearing masks? Well, if it's optional, they have the option to choose to wear them.
Thirty seconds.
Secondly, there is absolutely no possible reason. You can keep trying to drown me out, I don't care. Your boos feed me. Good, finally somebody is.
Hey, hey.
Because there is no legitimate reason to call out for teachers' names or posting their information or protesting in front of the school union president's house.
Thank you.
Let's fix problems. You don't win things by intimidating people.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Hayes. I don't even have a child in school anymore. I don't. I'm so mad about what you guys have done to these children. I'm going to show, I'm going to tell you why. Facial expressions for kids, helping children read emotions. When you try to read the emotions of people, you don't focus exclusively on their facial expressions. You rely on a variety of information, including tone of voice, body language, and contextual clues. But facial expressions are nevertheless crucially important and your ability to code them are linked to social, academic, and emotional outcomes. For example, children with stronger face reading skills may achieve more popularity at school. They tend to perform better academically, too. In addition, experiments hint that people who are better at identifying fearful expressions are more kind and generous. On the flip side, children who have more trouble identifying emotion in faces are more likely to have peer problems and learning difficulties. Isn't this something you guys are trying to fix? Preschoolers with poor face reading skills for their age are at higher risk for externalizing behavioral problems and they are more likely to engage in acts of overt aggression. And what if your child is very shy? Research suggests that poor motion recognition, emotion recognition, that is, I'm sorry, can make it harder. In one study, shy preschoolers with worse face reading abilities experienced higher levels of anxiety and peer rejection. So what determines a child's face reading abilities? Well, age matters. Around the world, from Canada to the Netherlands and to Italy to Japan, researchers have confirmed that children become more accurate as they get older. For example, we know that babies pay attention to our facial expressions and at an early age, they can tell the difference between, say, a happy smile and an angry scowl. We also, oh, and how can they do that when you all have your masks on? Especially you young, the ones that are teaching the 10 and under. This just has infuriated me for a long time. Infuriated me. I cannot believe, and you know what? Screw this. I cannot believe that we have social workers, that we have speech pathologists, speech people. We have all these teachers that are teaching these young children and you are covering your faces so they can't see your face? Why not? Why are you afraid? Why are you indoctrinating all of our children? You need to stop it. And you, I have sent you a FOIA request for your SRT bond. People need to look up what we can do when we put a claim against your SRT bond. And I'm starting that process now.
Three minutes.
It is called bonds2win.com. Oh yeah, you look around. Because once we put a claim against your SRT bond, you cannot ever run again. And I am, we are all, all upset about this. Thank you.
Next speaker. Next speaker, uh... Okay, next. Who's the next speaker? Okay, who's the next speaker, please? The next speaker is Maria Karamitos. And on deck will be Lisa Rowe.
Let's talk property taxes. With all due respect, stop. I recognize you're trying to correct years of neglect that left buildings to basically crumble, but you're taking the wrong approach. This pandemic put many out of work. Some are still out of work. Many are still recovering financially. Now is not the time to ask for more money. You know what people see? Years of declining academic performance while property taxes continue to rise. In the eight years that we've lived here, our property taxes have increased nearly 30%. That's right, 30% on a home that's decreasing in value because of the state of this state. 30% in a district with poor academic performance. If you wanted to remodel your house and your budget was only 25,000, would you spend much more and put yourself in financial jeopardy? No, you'd work within your means. Take a more measured approach and that's what we're asking you to do. New construction has brought in millions in additional property taxes. The district has received more federal funds. Where's it all going? Has it helped academic performance? No, it continues to decline. And yet, I hear no real plan to remedy it. Because you build shiny new facilities doesn't mean academic performance will automatically get back on track. Cost overruns from the referendum are now at $17.5 million. Please, stop. Really take that in. I realize there's inflation. The cost of materials has skyrocketed. Labor costs are up, but let's work smarter. You live here. It's your money, too. We ask you, the stewards of this district and its funds, to put on the brakes. Projects in progress, finish them. New projects, put them on hold temporarily. Limit the scope and number of projects going on concurrently. Make a new plan to improve facilities over the next five to 10 years. Develop and communicate your plans for maintaining these new facilities. We need to know that they won't be neglected as in the past. Stop. You're juggling way too many things. When we do this, nothing gets done right. Stop. Building projects should not be your first priority. The priority should be making plans to transition out of pandemic mode and to improve academics. No more surveys, consultants, new hires, SEL. None of it's helping. Stop. There's a lot of waste in this district. It's time to rein in the spending. Elmhurst residents are not open checkbooks. Whenever you want to spend more money, please ask yourselves, does this directly help students get academic performance on track? If not, cut. Put it on hold. You can't expect that if you just throw more money in, things will magically correct.
Three minutes, thank you.
Stop. These tax increases will only create more mistrust in the community.
Lisa Rowe is next.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Lisa, just one second. On deck is John Bishop, Bishop. And after him will be Hallie Weinchenker.
Hi, my name is Lisa Rowe and I have a first and second grader at Emerson. I want to start by thanking the board for doing the right thing and allowing our district to move to mask optional. Although this was long overdue, I do feel like it's a turning point for us to actually start moving forward together, Dr. Campbell, as you've been promising us all year. This transition will not be easy and I know you're feeling pressure from parents in this room and in our community, but I urge you not to look back. There were mixed emotions as I dropped my first and second grader off at school yesterday, knowing that they would be one of the only few probably not wearing masks. I had to tell them to be brave, to be leaders, and that I was proud of them. They were afraid. They were afraid that their classmates wouldn't like them. They were afraid that they would lose friends and they were afraid that they would get in trouble by their teachers. Despite their fears, they did it. And I want to be clear, they should have never had to carry that burden. And I'll say the same to you. This is your chance to be brave, to be leaders, and to have courage, even if you're afraid of what some people here and in this community are going to think of you. Please do not turn back. Continue to stand up for our kids who deserve a chance at returning to a life where they can interact with their peers and their teachers without having to hide their faces. We must continue to move forward from here. And if my first and second grader can do it, you can too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dr. Campbell, fellow members of the board. Hi, my name is John Bischoff. I have two children at Edison right now and one that will be at Edison next year. I'm also our PTA president at Edison, but I'm speaking on my own behalf, not on behalf of the school or the PTA. Wow, I was going to come here and give you guys a once-over for immediately dropping to masks optional after the TRO rather than giving us a rampway, but I'm hearing so much more that you're getting yelled at for it that I feel bad. It's tough for me to come up here and pile on. I will say this, you guys missed an opportunity. We had an opportunity to have a runway, to let the kids ease into this. A change, a welcome change. I don't want masks on my kid. I want to take them off. I want to get them all off. We're so close. Cases are going down. We almost had a vaccine for four and under. We were right there. Oh, laugh. You boo. I know what makes you cheer. All of you had an opportunity. We are for removing masks, getting back to normalcy, and we're right there. And I hope to God that I'm wrong, that we continue in the same direction with cases going down, vaccines going up, and people getting back to normal, which is what we all want as a community. Not doxing teachers and putting them up on a spotlight to, hey, this one's bad, that one's good, this one's bad. This is wrong. This community is split and divided. I went to Jackson, Bryan, York. I'll put my credentials out there and then I moved back. I thought I was moving back to the Elmhurst I knew and love. I don't know what this place is. Holy cow, I don't know how you guys do it. Like I said, I came up here, I said, I was going to say, imagine me angry faced saying all of the mean expletives that decorum won't allow. I give you guys credit. Thank you so much for what you do. Please keep it up. But we do have an issue. This is a temporary restraining order. What happens if it gets overturned? What happens on appeal? We don't have a plan for that. We don't have, we never had metrics for, we are definitely regardless of anything else, we're going to get rid of masks once levels get to here. We're going to call that normal and that's when we're going to go forward. That's all we had to do. That's all I'm asking for. Maybe wait until spring break. God, it's one more month. It's nothing in the grand scheme of things to prevent a potential additional wave, additional variants that might not be this nice Omicron that isn't seeming to be doing too much and burning through real quick. And I hope to God it continues to burn through real quick so that we can remove our masks because we want to, not because we're told to, not because other people are shaming us. Lots of bullying going on both ways with the masks. I hope you guys address that and keep, continue to keep our kids safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. Next is Hallie. And then on deck will be Elizabeth Santos. And 27 was already, has already spoken, so. Yeah, his number.
Go ahead. Thanks. Just say your name, please.
Good evening. My name is Hallie Weinchenker and I am a senior at York. I am normally not one for public speaking, but I felt like I had to come out here tonight. As we are all aware, the protocol for mask wearing in our district was changed this week as a result of a ruling by a judge in Sangamon County. With little time to respond, I understand that D205 made the best call that they could given the circumstances and made mask wearing optional for students. However abrupt this may have been, the COVID-19 virus is not new and I was surprised to learn that for all the meticulous planning that was done last school year to get kids off of Zoom into classrooms, no such protocols were even drawn up this year. This to me is concerning. I, along with my friend Addie Conrad, who is unfortunately able to be here tonight, am immunocompromised due to other medical conditions where contracting this virus is very dangerous for the both of us. Our bodies are not primed to fight this disease and by giving students the option to remove masks, we have been put at risk. I'm not here to propose reinforcing the mandate, but to ask that the Board of Education prepares and implements a version of at-home learning for students who no longer feel safe in school. Whether it be in-person and remote or just a Zoom option, this would make it so that people such as Addie and myself are fully focused on learning at school and not our physical health and safety. As I have said, we are not fighting the district's decision or criticizing students who do not choose to wear masks. We are here at this meeting to be heard. We acknowledge that these students do have the right not to wear a mask, but we are also justified in our desire to get an education in a learning environment that is comfortable to us. As students who are directly affected by this decision, we ask you to provide the choice so that people of the same circumstance as Addie and myself or others who struggle with anxiety of the situation can do what we attend school to do, get a high-quality education without being afraid for our health. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Santos and I'm actually fortunate to be able to follow this brave young lady because the message I'd like to start with is to say thank you for this open forum and also to personally admit that I approached the beginning of this year with a lot of trepidation as I do also have children at home that have some severe complications if they were to contract COVID. But aside from that, I'm also a lifelong educator and I come here because I need to point out some inconsistencies between the messaging that I see as in this district and the policy that has rolled out. Your plan for return to in-person instruction is titled Moving Forward Together, but the resistance to universal masking leaves some people behind. Specifically, the shortsightedness of a quick shift to an optional mask leaves behind vulnerable community members and those who just don't wish to incur additional risks. An inconsistency is your core belief that is actually on the banner right behind you that says that you base decisions on what's best for students and your actions demonstrate that that doesn't take into account all students. Secondly, I also see a core belief that states that we're future-focused and I presume that means we're looking at 21st century skills, like those in the NGSS standards and the C3 standards. And those standards teach children to be literate in gathering and interpreting evidence, evidence that is based on a scientific method, statistical analysis, and that is corroborated by more science. That's what those standards prioritize. And all of the experts recommend universal masking in schools for the time being. The CDC, the White House, Department of Education, all, excuse me. The DuPage County Health Department, they make recommendations so that policymakers such as yourself can take action. They don't recommend that you also recommend. I urge you to stay the course and to help our community pull through with health and with integrity and to stick to our community ideals and consider a layered policy toward optional masking based on metrics and alignment to the shared values that you're purporting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Next speaker is Nate Stettin. And we heard from number... Nate Stettin. And we heard from number 12 already. So next will be, and number two as well. Yeah, I'll just go down since we're hearing from everyone. Liz Thompson will be after her. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Stettin. I'm just going to finish for Nate. He was kind of cut off. So anyway, what he was trying to talk about was he wishes that you all would stop in the community, would stop focusing so much on masks since it is optional and you can wear one or not wear one at this point. And you would focus on the other things. And what he was going to say was that his sister has fear in her eyes every time she has to go to the bathroom during lunch. Do you all want to know why? Because she has to pass a dozen girls who are doing drugs. So she won't go to the bathroom during lunch. She's told me she refuses. She shouldn't have to focus on those things. She should focus, she should be focusing on being safe in school and being able to use the bathroom. And shouldn't you all be focusing on what really matters, such as their future? I am upset that you are not focusing. This is Nate. are not focusing, this is Nate, on students who are smoking weed in the bathroom, but instead are focusing, are focusing on political issues such as masks. To conclude, why are teachers focusing on issues such as keeping us safe from COVID and telling us that we are killing people by not having our masks on? They're focusing on these issues and not teaching a real curriculum, in my, in his opinion. I also have some personal experiences to share from my classes. I'm not going to do that tonight. You want to know why? Because I'm scared that my teachers will take points away from my grades for doing it, as it has happened to my classmates. Even these comments tonight could hurt my grades. Should a student have to fear retribution for their basic right of freedom of speech? If I were to talk, if I were to talk about teachers teaching biased opinions, should that be the case? That he's afraid? I also want to point out, this is from my perspective, that there was a teacher yesterday at York who wasn't wearing a mask. That all the kids were shocked. They were like, wow, that teacher, she's not being political, because she would have been one that we would have thought would have her mask on. And then today, all of a sudden, she was wearing her mask. The message it sends is that it is political. All of you, every single one, and I know some of you are sitting here with your masks on, and you know what that tells us? It is political. You're not individuals here. You're not standing for what you believe in. You're sitting here separated as if that's how you all feel. And I know for a fact, I've had conversations with some of you, you are individuals, and you need to stand for what you believe in.
Sarah Judicki will be on deck.
Hi, my name's Liz Thompson. I have four children in District 205, one daughter at Churchville, and three children at Emerson. It's been a long couple of years, but I'm here to commend you tonight for your decision to allow families to follow choice in masking. My children were so excited to see their friends' faces. It was like the first day of school all over again at drop-off. But I am also here to tell you that you must resolve that this never happens again. We have done a lot of harm through masking, distancing, telling our children not to speak to each other at lunchtime, making them eat on cold sidewalks, canceling the things that matter, the events at their schools, everything that they look forward to. These traditions are things that they don't get back. The data and evidence does not show benefits, and we are seeing only the beginning of the damage, academically, socially, behaviorally. Kids need this community and school district to get back to focusing on their needs. I want to make sure the message is clear. We will not stand for different treatment for parents calling the school and asking for their child not to be near an unmasked child. Requests like this might not be allowed. Discussing how unmasked faces make others feel unsafe is a toxic message. Offering mask-free students a mask as they walk into school is a form of bullying when it is a teacher and administrator. You sent out a message that you support mask choice. You need to make it more clear that what is going on in this district is not acceptable. These young children do not need a teacher telling them, here's your mask. What's been done to the kids is unacceptable. We took away so much. Please do not let this happen again. We have a lot of work to do as this school community to build back, to support our children. There are some who are truly fearful. There are some who have received a lot of bullying on both sides of this. I do not want my children being any part of that, and I hope this entire community feels that way, too. And I want to end by thanking the parents, the parents of this community who have fought so hard for children. My kids, thank you.
30 seconds. Sarah Judicki is next, and she's here. Excuse me. Sarah Judicki. And then on deck is Jen Fiocha. Fiocha, sorry.
Board members, Superintendent Campbell, I am here today to express my appreciation for your decision to go mask optional. I knew I would be emotional when this day finally came, but I had no clue just how emotional I would become. When I dropped my seventh grader off at Churchville Monday morning, and he looked back at me and half-smiled, the tears began to well in my eyes. That's the first time at drop-off since he's been a middle schooler that I've actually been able to see his face as he has left my car. Middle school is hard, and middle schoolers are harder. They often keep a lot inside, so the fact that I was able to read his face, know as his mom what his expression meant, was overwhelming to me. I knew because of his face that he was scared, scared that he'd get in trouble, scared that his peers would judge him. But he did it. I told him his adult self will someday be so proud of his 12-year-old self. I was so happy that this moment was finally happened, but so sad that it took us so long, too long, to get here. Kids hold a lot of emotions inside, but a lot of time, their face is a sure-tell sign of what's going on. As a former elementary school teacher for over, almost 10 years, I had my fair share of students who would put on brave faces every day, act like they understood some lessons, and say that they were fine, everything was okay. But it was times when they thought that no one was looking, when I was able to get a real sense of how they were feeling, of how their day was going. This helped me so much as their teacher, to build a strong relationship with them, to aid them in their learning, to be a shoulder or a voice of comfort when they needed it. But for the past two years, our teachers have not had this opportunity. Our kids, who often don't have loud enough voices yet, or aren't mature enough to vocalize their feelings, have had to navigate the past two scary, confusing, and ever-changing, two years without a caring adult in their school setting to be able to read their emotions. That, to me, is heartbreaking. But thanks to you all and your ability to recognize that COVID is not going anywhere, and we all deserve the freedom to choose how we best protect our children, I ask that you continue to make 205 optional, no matter what happens in the next coming weeks, that you weigh your decisions with the foremost thought about those children's faces, and that because of your recent choice, know that some of these children have finally felt seen.
Jen Rice will be on deck.
Good evening, Dr. Campbell and D-205 board members. My husband came across a quote by Maya Angelou recently that "We feel sums up our collective and shared COVID experience, COVID journey to this point nicely. Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you knew, know better, do better." We all did the best we could for almost two years. We've done the best we could. During this time, we've learned a lot. We now know better, and it's now time to do better. This is because of, for many of us, we fear the road back to a nor, more normal, pre-COVID-like time for our kids and our community is going to take us a long time, if not longer than it took for us to get to this very moment tonight, which again has taken us almost two years to get to. Thank you for your decision Sunday to recognize and follow the order handed down last Friday by Judge Grishaw, striking down the unlawful mandates within the governor's executive orders. That said, this is no time to rest. I sincerely hope and pray that you, Dr. Campbell, that all of you D-205 members, that all of us are as committed to putting in place a plan, working together, and holding ourselves accountable to repair whatever educational, mental, and/or social damage that has been caused by the last 23 months, as everyone has been implementing and enforcing all of these COVID protocols. Thank you.
Jen Rice is next, and then Hillary Reeve on deck. I thought that was Jen Fiocha. Sorry. Hillary Reeve?
Sure.
Who, what was your last name, Jen, that just spoke? Okay. Okay, so Jen Rice, you're the next speaker after Hillary. Okay, sorry. Thanks. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Hillary Reeve. I'm a parent of two children in D-205. I am thankful for the Austin versus Pritzker ruling and for this administration and board's decision to abide by the ruling, and in so, in doing such, abide by the law. This ruling did not remove parent, parental rights or choice from anyone. This ruling simply returned parental rights and choice to all. While this is a huge step forward, we clearly have an immense amount of healing to do. For two years, we have directly or indirectly told the children that they are vectors of disease, grandparent killers, and the only means to stop their fatal impact on their community is to mask up. We have the responsibility to help our children heal from all of this, from everything we and you, as our leadership, have inflicted on them. We must be harmonious in our positioning on this. We must show them that we are united and we are diverse. And I would have to agree. It's disheartening to see every single one of you in a mask tonight. That is not showing the ability for diversity, inclusion, and a harmonious, supportive front for all families. We need to remove, we need to remove the subtleties, right? Masks up open hearts hangs in York. That is implying that if you do not mask, you do not have an open heart. You're not compassionate. That is not at all truth. Okay, sorry, I lost my train of thought. We also need to stop with the subtlety of bullying. Tonight, as we started this meeting, you offered a roomful of adults who clearly have a very strong position on this masking if they wanted a mask. I assure you, we and our children, if we want a mask, we are showing up to the places with our own masks. It's great if children know, if they forget, they can ask a teacher, but to, to state every day, we have a mask, would you like a mask? That is subtle bullying, and that is not right. We have done that for two years. We need to start letting the children know diversity truly is accepted in this community. Thank you for your time and your support.
Jen Rice, and then Tim Koch is on deck. Tim Koch.
Hi.
K-O-C-H. Cook.
Hi, I'm Jen Rice. I have four kids in the district, and I just want to thank you for honoring the TRO and returning to your initial reopen plan, because let's not forget, when this started in August, you allowed mask choice, and that was, that's important to remember to this community. So thank you. Instead of worrying about Forward Together, I really hope we can work on the present moment. We all have fears. Everybody has fears in this room. Everyone's worried about whether they're healthy, their kids are healthy, in a mask, without a mask. There are options with masks that go one way. Those are called P-100s. They can be fit, and you can protect yourself. I, I, sorry, this is off cuff again. The other thing I feel like is somewhere along the lines, we're so divided, and you talked about it, and we're all talking about it, but what we're not talking about is who's dividing us. I don't think it's you. I don't think it's you. I don't think it's me. I think it's the elites, and I think there's people that are kind of playing us against each other. And I, and you got to ask yourself, why? Why is that? And think about that, because it's not just dividing us in our communities, in the school. It's dividing our families. It's dividing our friendships. And instead of respecting each other's individual liberties or medical choices, we're getting angry at each other. And our kids are seeing that, and I'm getting tired of it. In two years, they promised no mandates to only issue mandates. That's what's happening with these elites. We've spent much of this time listening to one doctor only, only one governor, one school board, and the most important people we should be listening to really is ourself. We know what is right for us, and we know what is right for our kids. Dr. Wen, today, a correspondent of CNN, said, things have changed. Science has changed. It's time to return the decision to mask or not to the parents. So thank you, Judge Grishaw. We have the ability now to decide what is best for our own children. The lawyers argued, I was there in the courtroom, they argued that once the kids step inside the school building, the administrators and teachers take over parental rights. I think we know that's not true, right? Many people have left the district because of the mask policy. I don't want to see more kids leave the district because of this mask policy. For two years, we've talked about, too much about death count, case counts, hospital counts. We failed to talk about early treatment, health and wellness. Again, I'm just going to skip ahead on this. What I feel, what I ask you right now is that this is the plan by law. Can we move forward? Can we eliminate COVID discussion entirely? Can we eliminate it from the district emails? Can we really start talking about where, how we're educating our kids and truly put this?
30 minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Mazinga will be on deck. I don't know, is my mic not working? Mike Mazinga will be on deck. You're okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tim Cook. My bride, Terry, and I are lifelong residents and blessed with five adult children, four son-in-laws, one daughter-in-law, and our 10th grandchild will be here later this month, and all are expected to matriculate here. All of us here are blessed by our nation's founders, who provided us with three branches of government to provide checks and balances and separation of powers, in part to prevent tyranny. We are a nation of laws, of the people, for the people, and by the people. To prevent tyranny of autocratic fiats, or in today's parlance, we seem headed for them, including what has been creeping into our schools. As Henry Brooks Adams said, "Teachers affect eternity. They never know where their influence stops." We thank them for taking on that awesome responsibility and implore them, and you, to help prepare our children and grandchildren as contributing members of our shining city upon Cottage Hill.
Thank you. Ioana Fernandez will be up next.
If I could first acknowledge the Madison Minidukes. I'm a proud parent of a graduate from there. And our youngest had speech delay, and after a month at Madison, we couldn't shut the kid up. I can't imagine what it would be like having a kid there with masks on in the last two years. And I don't care what side of the issue you stand on. If you're watching those videos, what a difference a face makes. I'd like to thank Dr. Campbell and the board for sticking to their word on respecting the judge's decision. So what did the judge's decision and 205's reaction show us? It really showed us two things. One, this had very little, if anything, to do with COVID science or safety and everything to do about fear and control. What changed from last Friday afternoon to this Monday morning as it relates to COVID? Nothing. What changed about the efficacy of masks and the benefits of quarantining healthy children and staff? Nothing. Another thing it showed us is that we still have no plan to get back to normal. Families were glued to their phones or computers till 6:00 PM on Sunday, wondering what Monday would bring. We were told early Sunday that lawyers were being consulted, and we painfully waited for the decision to come out. Everyone knew at the last board meeting that the judge was going to make a ruling. Why wasn't there a plan to quickly move to? To me, it shows we were still not working towards a plan to return to normal. As someone that was happy with the ultimate decision to go mask optional, I want you to now pivot to what's next. to now pivot to what's next. We all heard that the governor's appealing the order. I actually, while I was here, got a text from a friend that Governor Pritzker's going to announce tomorrow he's lifting the indoor mask mandate at the end of the month, except, except in schools, because there's an appeal. How ridiculous. How ridiculous. There are many here and at home tonight that want to be clear, we're not going back to a mask mandate. We finally have what everyone has always wanted on these issues, a choice. Family, students, teachers, staff have the freedom to make their own choices. No governor, no government agency needs to ask, be asked for permission anymore. People on both sides of the issue can now have the freedom of choice, and that is something that's long overdue.
30 seconds.
My last message tonight is for teachers. I know there's some here, I know there's probably some watching. It was sad to learn that most teachers remain in masks. I understand that the fear that has been spread over the past two years will not go away overnight. I also respect anyone's decision to stay masked for whatever reason, and will never assume to know anyone's personal reason to wear one. But the teachers and staff need to know, these kids need to see their faces. They look up to them. Their continued masking is sending a message to these kids that they fear them and the air they breathe.
30 minutes.
Teachers, they look up to you. They want to see your face. They want to return to normal. They want to be kids, and you will, you just may play the biggest role in their return to normal. Thank you.
Thank you. On deck will be Angie Sutherland.
Hello. My name is Ioana Fernandez, and with my husband Phil, we are parents of two beautiful boys. Our goal as parents is to raise kids, our kids, to be kind, respectful, responsible, and independent adults. Because of this, we rely on a team of people to help us raise our boys. In Almhurst Course, we found some of the most amazing people to complete our village and help us reach our parenting goals. From D-205 Board members, we learned all about the power of giving back to our community. Your many hours of volunteer work are definitely appreciated, and we see you. From the District 205 administrators and employees, we learned the power of grit and perseverance. It takes a ton of time, effort, and learning to get to the positions you all perform today. From all our teachers, we learned the power of giving, caring for others, and moving forward. We saw in the past two years how fast you adjusted to a constantly changing environment, while giving our kids your consistent attention, whether it was online or in person, all this while you all had to navigate COVID with your own families. For the past few months, we have witnessed tensions rising over COVID protocols in our community. COVID continues to affect everyone, and we all wish there was a sense of normalcy. But every time we seem to be getting closer to some normalcy, COVID has other plans. We understand that all families are done with COVID, and we would love to be back to normal. However, there are still many families for whom COVID is still a threat, to them living in good health, and we cannot pretend those families do not exist. The TRO issued over the weekend intensified tensions on both sides of the COVID conversation. Moving from mask mandates to mask optional overnight heightened a tense atmosphere in our schools. Many students who choose to wear masks are being bullied and pressured to remove them by their non-mask-wearing peers. Teachers cannot get involved in these conversations because they will expose themselves to being harassed. Whether masked or unmasked, our kids are now divided, and our teachers should not be put in a position to police the situation. We see board members, principals, teachers, and nurses being judged and criticized, no matter what they do and how they do it. No one should come to work wondering if they are going to be harassed for things that are not under their control. This affects all our kids. This school district is amazing and on track on becoming even better.
30 seconds.
I urge our community to stop looking for what is wrong and start paying attention to all of the good happening right in front of us. Our kids are in school, taught by incredible teachers, in an environment that welcomes diversity of opinion and thought. I urge parents to support our teachers in educating our kids, and to be partners with those involved in our kids' education, and look for ways of reaching a common ground. Our kids and their well-being should be what guides our decisions and not the agenda of some political groups.
30 minutes.
I urge everyone to protect the quality of our schools, our teacher, and the education that is being provided to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Olga Vino Gradova is on deck.
Good evening. Good evening. I have two children in District 205. I have a second grader at Hawthorne and a preschooler at Madison. While I'm very pleased to see that the entire board is masked today, I am disappointed in your interpretation of the TRO to go mask optional, at a time when our youngest community members have yet to be vaccinated but are just so close to getting there. Out of 8,000 students and families in this district, only a small minority of folks are wrongly claiming that masks don't work, that they're bad for learning, and it's negatively impacting kids' mental health. But let's talk about mental health, because the same group that claims that masks are causing mental health issues in kids are also calling to remove SEL from our curriculum. Mental health and social-emotional learning is an absolutely integral part for a child's development into becoming a productive and well-adjusted member of our society. Let's remind everyone here today that the goal of public education is to educate the public. It's not to educate my child specifically, or your children specifically, but it's the public. We need the public to be educated and to become future leaders of our society. Those future leaders are counting on us today to give them the tools and the skills necessary to be, to become those members of society tomorrow, and one of those tools is SEL. I've been a working professional for over 15 years, and it wasn't until about four years ago, after I received a promotion at work, that I took a two-day training program regarding emotional intelligence. The training was meant to help leaders like myself at my company manage relationships with my staff and other team members in order to achieve various goals. My field specifically is in STEM. I have a bachelor's degree in actuarial science. I'm a fellow with the Society of Actuaries. However, it does no one any good how much math I know, if I'm not able to identify when I'm stressed and how that can result in that fight-or-flight response in my interactions with others. It does no one any good how well I use stats if I'm not able to empathize with others and conduct myself in an environment that's productive and inclusive. It should not take 10 years post-college graduation for me to learn this, and by no means am I perfect. But we can do something about it now, and the best way to do that is to continue incorporating SEL in our schools, as we've seen earlier today at Madison and Jefferson. I was amazed at how much of this training that I took applies to my day-to-day life with my children, with my friends, with my husband. So, SEL is education. Test scores and GPAs are meaningless without the social and emotional capacity to understand life stressors and engage amicably and productively with society. Unfortunately, right now, our community is broken, and there are people who want to continue to break us into a million more pieces. Look at what a lack of SEL education from a generation ago has led us to. Telling us to be merely respectful of all the different perspectives is just not working. It's like applying a Band-Aid to a gushing wound when it desperately needs surgery. But we have a chance to break this cycle and do better for our kiddos. This pandemic has harmed us in so many ways, and these kids need SEL now more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney Bowman will be on deck.
Hi there. Thank you again for your time and for allowing time for everyone to speak tonight. I know it's been a long night. My name's Olga. I have a kiddo at Madison. Thank you, teachers. Some of his teachers are here today, and I'm also a product of District 205, Hawthorne, Sandberg, and York. I also actually came here to be a little bit more aggressive towards you with the way this went, but I see that you've got things stacked against you a little bit today. So, really, I'd like to just bring the perspective of a parent of a younger kiddo who has an IEP and has thrived at Madison. He started when he was three, in the middle of this pandemic. He has never known anything else. He is in speech, he is in English classes, he gets help with emotional regulation, and he has done amazingly well. He wears his mask every day. He honestly doesn't mind. I know it is challenging for some kids, and he does struggle sometimes with, you know, knowing when new kids come into class, it sometimes takes them a few days to learn their names. But when he struggles with these difficulties, we actually lean on the education that he is getting at Madison about how to deal with those struggles with kindness and understanding and resilience. And I think this entire situation is an opportunity for us to teach our kids resilience. They are honestly going to have much bigger challenges in their lives than wearing a mask. So, use this as an opportunity to teach them that, yes, you are going to be inconvenienced sometimes in your life. Yes, things are going to be difficult, but if you approach it with a perspective of caring and looking forward. I am as desperate as anyone here to see my kid's face I drop off, but I understand that this is temporary. The most important thing is for all of us to get through it together. This includes the youngest children who are not eligible for a vaccine. This includes children who have health conditions that make them either ineligible for the vaccine or vaccine nonresponders. And having the conversation with our children that our minor inconvenience of wearing a mask is worth it, so that these other children can participate in this experience is just another ability for us to educate them further. So, I urge you, if you have the opportunity to maybe do this roadmap a little bit differently, to consider the most vulnerable and possibly link the removal of future mask mandates to vaccine eligibility for the younger children, and also provide opportunities on Zoom and remote learning for kids who are at risk. Thank you so much.
Thank you. On deck will be John Sullivan.
Hi, everybody. Courtney Bowman. I'm here tonight to thank the board for respecting the TRO. I'm also asking the board to continue to fight against any future mask mandates. Our kids deserve a return to normalcy. You know, I was listening, this is off the cusp, but I was listening to a comment where someone said that it's only a small group of people who want mask optional, and those are the same people who don't care about SEL. And I think the sort of tribalism that's happening across this country and within our community is what's really dividing us, assuming things about people that aren't true. I'm a mental health clinician, and I fully support SEL, and I fully support masks being optional. Let's stop grouping each other and making assumptions. Anyway, thank you for giving parents of D-205 the power to decide what's best for their children's well-being, whether that be masked or unmasked. Although this likely will fall on deaf ears, I'd like everyone to keep in mind that the CDC's own data shows that annual pediatric mortality from COVID is similar to that of the flu and unvaccinated children. Please remember that health is more than just the absence of a, absence of COVID-19 infection. It is holistic, encompassing, mental, social, and emotional health as well. Even with acknowledging the risk of COVID on aggregate, it's better for millions of kids to return to normalcy than it is to restrict their life. Restrictions have costs and downsides. I will not allow others to gaslight me anymore and tell me that masks and other restrictions are no big deal. They are. I spoke here last week on the impact of these restrictions have on social-emotional learning and on the mental health crisis that continues to grow. I'm happy for all you parents that are masking your children. Please go, continue to. I fully support you. I just want the same respect from everybody else. I, before school, the past two days, I've told my kid, be nice to everyone. Everyone's going to have different opinions. Everyone's going to make different choices. It's okay. You know, we're a community. I want my friends, I want my kids' half-friends who disagree with me about masks. I don't really care. We all want our kids to be happy here. Anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys, and, you know, returning to normal life like we did this week is the best way we can support and protect the overall health of our children.
John Sullivan will be our last speaker. Unless, there was a Nick Stanton on the list, and I, we had a Nate Stanton. That was a different name. So, I just want to make sure that he's, there isn't a Nick Stanton here that wanted to speak, and otherwise, John will be our last speaker.
Okay. Same in the, last, that's for last. Here we go. John Sullivan, you know, when you open up the meeting, and it's been interesting, as a retired teacher, my first year of retirement, kind of a little different world for me, it's been interesting coming to these meetings. In your opening statement, everybody in the meeting saying, hey, we won't make comments? We'll listen. If we want more information, we'll get it. We'll call you up. We have your information. We'll contact you, which is great, because, you know, we want to have a true understanding. And you also talked about the health and wellness of all community members, the students, teachers, community as a whole. So, with that being said, we've got to look at, we've been hearing about critical thinking, very, very important. And was, one of the most important things in critical thinking is ask why. Why? And as a teacher, that's something I wanted for my kids. Challenge me, ask why, and then we'll keep searching until we get to the correct answer. So, when I, when I'm listening to the different topics over the numerous board meetings, I keep saying, well, why? So, one struck me in December was Jenny, and Jenny came here and spoke, and she talked about her son, who was in junior high, and Jenny, you know, it's a little recap, Jenny said, they were talking about the vaccine, and the teacher brought it out. Who's vaccinated? Raise your hand. And her son didn't. So, he was, he was targeted, and that's a form of bullying. And Jenny brought her concerns to, to here, and she asked to meet with the teacher and the principal, which she did, and she said, their response to her was, I'm sorry you feel that way. She then contacted Dr. Campbell via email and said, I'd like to meet with you. No response. She came here and said, I'm still waiting for that meeting. I talked to Jenny later this afternoon, and I said, Jenny, did anybody contact you? And she said, Dr., she said, nobody. So, what you've got to look at is why. The whole board heard it. The administration heard it. So, the principal, the teacher, nobody asked. Jenny, how are you? More importantly, how's your son? Why? I think that's an important question to ask. Here, we're talking about the health and wellness of our kids, and not one person called up Jenny to see how her son was doing.
30 seconds.
Jenny pulled her kid out of, out of District 205. So, we've got to think about it. So, one of those things that we've got to think about is, we've got to keep asking why. And board, I know you're under, I understand, hey, you can't make a phone call that day, but you can make a phone call within a week, two weeks at most. This has been over eight weeks. So, ask yourself why you're not calling Jenny. I think you might find more important information. Good luck.
Okay, okay. So, thank you. We'll take a five-minute recess.
We'll take a five minute recess. We good? Okay. What? Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have two items. The one has been talked about in both a committee meeting and the last board meeting. Were there any items that anyone would like pulled from the consent agenda? All right, hearing none, could I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items. A, bid twenty-two dash oh nine Fisher Classroom Edition renovations, and B, disposal of surplus band equipment.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Kozinski, second by Mrs. Arvenitis. You could please call the vote.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hustler?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. We have five yes, zero no, two absent. All right, that was slow. The motion passes. Yeah. All right. Next, we have agenda action items. Item A is approve real estate purchase and sale agreement for four thirty-five West Fullerton Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois. I'll ask Mr. Welton to give a quick background and then I'll ask for a motion.
Todd Schmidt's going to do it for you.
Okay.
Todd.
Yes, this property here, historically, the maintenance department and the operations department for the school district has a maintenance facility by Bryan Middle School. And we also have what we refer to as a gravel lot out in front of Bryan. That's where we've been keeping all the stuff that we use for maintaining the district's property and buildings from snowplows, tractors, trailers, pickup trucks, box trucks, aerial lifts, and just storing stuff that we have that we need from time to time throughout the district. As part of this process, we're looking to consolidate that and find a facility that could house all that equipment so we're not in front of Bryan at the gravel lot. We're not parking vehicles out at Bryan. We're not parking vehicles and storage equipment over at Sandberg or over at the stadium. And plus, give us a facility where we get a lot of the larger deliveries and we're actually using the field house as a warehouse and a storage area. And that conflicts with a lot of the athletic equipment out there. So this facility that we're asking for the board to approve for purchase will be able to house our warehouse opportun, our warehousing for the district along with us parking some of our vehicles inside and our equipment, not leaving them outside into elements. It'll just give us the space so that we could pull all our equipment back from various sites throughout the district and consolidate it into just one maintenance and operations facility.
Okay, all right. I'll ask for a motion and then if there's any questions or comments.
I move that the Board of Education approve and that the Board President and Secretary execute the real estate purchase and safe agreement for the school district's purchase of four thirty-five West Fullerton Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois, in substantially the form presented to the Board of Education.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Collins?
As, as Todd said, I don't know how many years ago it was, approximately ten, maybe a little less. In an effort not to have diesel fumes enter Bryan Middle School, we moved our maintenance operation to the corner of, I believe that is Butterfield and Euclid. Maybe I'm a block off, but Bryan, Butterfield and Bryan. And, and frankly, over the years, we turned that lot into kind of an eyesore for the neighborhood. Actually, not kind of an eyesore, definitely an eyesore. And this, you know, through some discussions with the city, we moved off of that gravel lot and started to park our vehicles in parking lots and around the school district. Some of the public probably doesn't know is by not having our vehicles locked up, we've lost five catalytic converters due to vandalism and theft in the past year. You know, expenses which the taxpayer has to, has to foot the bill. The purchase of this building is not substantially more money than what we were talking about converting Bryan gravel lot to a paved lot with water retention underneath it. And since this is a building, it allows us to park our vehicles inside at night, protecting them and extending their useful lives. It also, as Todd pointed out, provides us with a facility to store all of the things you need to store to run and, you know, eleven hundred employee, twelve hundred employee, eighty-five hundred kid school district. I, I think this is, this is a good move on our part and it's taxpayer money well spent.
Thanks for the sort of history. And just to add on, this is part of, you know, we committed in the 2019 intergovernmental agreement with the city that we would clean up the lot and make sure it looked better. And so this is also, you know, we were able to extend it because of the pandemic, but this is also a solution that we committed to, committed to solving that problem with the city a couple of years ago. So I want to, keeping our word on that. Any other questions or comments about this purchase? Okay, then we can please call the vote.
Can you tell me who seconded? Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hustler?
Yes.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five ayes, no nays, two absent. The motion passes. All right, item B, resolution transferring funds from the operations and maintenance fund to the bond and interest fund and abating a portion of the taxes heretofore levied for the year 2021 to pay debt service on general obligation refunding school bonds series 2015. Mr. Welton, could you just give a quick?
So we had Elizabeth Hennessy here at the last meeting to discuss, she, she discussed a presentation with different options related to abatement. And it was suggested that the board consider option five, which option five included for the 2021 year, an abatement of six hundred and fifty thousand. What that means is that money would be transferred out of the operating reserves, the operating, the operations and maintenance fund over to the debt service fund so that, so that that money would be used to pay, to pay the bonds. And so the, the tax, the tax, the debt service tax extension would be reduced by that six hundred and fifty thousand. So that money would be paid for out of the operating reserves as opposed to the property taxes. So that, that sums it up.
Could I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution transferring funds from the operations and maintenance fund to the bond and interest fund and abating a portion of the taxes herefore levied for the year 2021 to pay debt service on the general obligation refunding school bonds series 2015.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Collins, second by Mr. Kozinski. Comments, questions? I know, I just want to point out, we have had multiple discussions about this, both at the Finance and Operations Committee meetings in October and December, and then both at the December fourteenth regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting, and then at the January twenty-second Board of Education meeting. We have not historically talked about this every year, but last year we did abate over approximately three million for our taxpayers and we are now making it a part of our conversation every year to have, you know, you can only, you have to look at it every year. You can't do, do it for multi-years without a discussion and separate vote. Just wanted to put that out there for just a bit of history and then if anybody has any questions or comments. Jim?
Last year in our discussion, you know, the administration recommended, the board supported that we abate three point one million dollars. We did so. It got, frankly, got very little public attention. And we also, the spirit of our discussion, we were going to do this several years in a row. I, I know the administration's planning a larger amount than the motion on the floor for next year and rightfully so. I, I just think it's fair for our taxpayers because of the way we budget. We approve a budget two months into the beginning of the school year. And then we tax, we put our tax levy together two months later. And then three months after that, we estimate what our costs are going to be for the following year. The process is kind of backwards, but it is the process dictated by the state of Illinois. So what that makes almost every school board in Illinois do is levy to the maximum. And over the past dozen years, we accumulated thirty-eight million dollars in extra funds. The spirit of financing public school districts in Illinois is that it's a pay you go process that the people that use the educational services that year pay for them that year. Ours job is not to accumulate the public's money, but we had over the past dozen years. So I think, and the public was also very generous when the school district asked for a hundred and sixty-eight million dollar referendum. They approved it by over sixty percent. I think it's only fair to the taxpayer that as we have extra funds, we return some of them to the taxpayer. And that's all I'm trying to do in this motion is for three years in a row, return some funds to the taxpayer because, because of the law, because of the inflation rate, between this year and next year, property taxes are going to go up considerably. And I just think it's a good gesture to return some of the excess back to the taxpayer. That's all I'm asking here.
Thanks. Chris?
Yeah, so, I mean, I agree with the vast majority of what Jim just outlined in terms of, you know, I, I do think the district is in a sound financial position. I don't think it's excessive, but I think we're in a sound financial position. I agree, you know, with what Kara mentioned that, you know, we, we considered abatement last year, decided to move forward. We're considering again this year. I think that's a good precedent to set for the future that returning capital back to taxpayers is, is a potential use of, of excess cash each year. And it's something I think the board should continue to, to consider. I, I think it's just, the only where I differ is, you know, how much cushion is the right amount? And so, you know, we, we have thirty-eight million of what I would deem excess cash. And so, you know, we, we have 38 million of what I would deem excess cash. And we have earmarked to spend just under 20 of that as a result of, you know, decisions that we've made that I think will be positive for the kids in terms of facilities, expansions where we, we decided to do a bit more than what was promised in the referendum. And long-term, I don't think we'll regret that because it's cheaper to do that when these buildings are open and, and it's more efficient to do it that way. In addition, we decided to absorb the inflationary environment rather than reduce the scope and build buildings that were less than what we had promised in the referendum. And so, you know, and then buying the building that we just discussed. So, you know, the, the 38 million of trough cash flow or excess cash, excuse me, you know, is in the high teens in my mind. And the question is how much, you know, for a district of our scale is the right amount? And I think we would all agree zero isn't the right amount. And I personally would like to see a bit more clarity on the cost picture for all the projects that we still have left before, before sort of agreeing to bring that excess cash level even lower than the high teens where I think that's how I view it today. So, and when I looked at it relative to the peers that I think we're trying to emulate, you know, I don't think that our reserve balances are excessive as they, as they stand here today. So not where I expected to fall out on the issue or where I thought I would be a year ago. But that's just where the numbers led me in this process and I'm willing to take a fresh look at it again next year. So.
Anybody else? All right, let's, oh.
Yeah, if I can just add one thing, over the last 12 years, we've never had to dip into those reserves. You know, and now we've issued 160, we have 168 million in construction projects. That's going to have 180 million handle on it by the time we're all done. So I'm glad those reserves are there. You know, it saves the process going back to the taxpayer and asking for more money. And these cost overruns, you know, are not due to anything the board has done, anything our architects or, or contractors or construction managers have done. It is just the freak state of the economy at the moment, and it's hit us. But even in a, you know, I won't call it a worst case scenario, but a very bad case scenario, for all the projects that are unfinished, we'll, we'll still have over 10 million left in, you know, what I'll call excess cash. So I think 650,000, 650,000 versus the excess cash we have in the books today is 1.7% of it. So I, I just want to point that out to put it in perspective.
Okay, anything else? Good. All right, please call the vote.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
No.
Mrs. Arvenitis?
No.
Mrs. Hassler?
No.
And Mrs. Ceforio?
No. One eye, four nose, two absent, the motion does not pass. Super, and next up is Superintendent's Communication. Item A is Elmhurst Police Education and Outreach Program.
Good evening, everyone. In years past, our students in fifth grade would engage in a DARE program. This took place typically during the fall or the spring, depending on the student's school attendance. And this year, we are very excited to continue to partner with the Elmhurst Police Department by offering what we are calling the Elmhurst Police Outreach and Education Program. It will be for all students in fifth grade, and it is planned for the spring 2022 semester. This program is not DARE, but has similar situation and similar practices. Elmhurst Police Officers, who are trained in this programming, will engage with all of our fifth grade students at each elementary school for three roughly 60-minute sessions focused on topics such as bullying, dealing with stressful situations, proper decision-making, risks and consequences, as well as elements of emotional learning, and drug abuse and drug awareness. The sessions are anticipated to begin possibly as soon as late February, and more likely into March. And if you have any questions in the meantime, you can definitely reach out to school principals. And we are just really excited to continue with that partnership that is ongoing and always helpful to have the community collaboration. So thank you.
Any questions about that?
No questions. Just happy that we were able to partner with the police department and offer this program again. The DARE program benefited all of our, most of our students. And I, I like that this program is going to span all of our buildings. So thank you so much for your work in this.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you for bringing it back because this is, you know, following up and the work. All right, next is 2021, 2022 Moving Forward Together update and COVID metrics.
The board heard extensive updates on the plan regarding our Forward Together Plan at our meetings in September, as well as each meeting in October, November, December, and January. And so tonight, I want to just speak to just a couple of, of, of updates. With clarification of with the TRO that's in place, the following has changed, and that is that whether requiring masks in schools, students and staff are strongly recommended to wear masks in schools. The other change that this has brought about is school-based close contacts are evaluated now in conjunction with the DuPage County Health Department. I would like to however clarify that our following layered mitigations, other mitigations still remain in place within the school setting. We are still offering vaccination clinics and collecting vaccination information from our students and our staff. We are offering any, upon request, any additional personal protective equipment for students and staff. We still have in place optional weekly testing for students and staff. We have a centralized testing program for students who are symptomatic or who wish to participate in the Test to Stay program, which we have received numerous comments of appreciation and, and thankfulness for that service being provided to those who would like to take advantage of it. We are asking students and staff who are ill and who exhibit symptoms to please stay home and focus on getting better. Quarantining with the health department is totally regulated by them as deemed necessary. We've mentioned this before, our enhancements of our air circulation, which is consistent with our best practices. We are physically distancing students to the extent possible with, with still a focus as it pertains to particular locations like eating spaces. And then we are still notifying parents and families when an outbreak occurs or when a student has been exposed in, in a low-risk situation. Also, we are still making publicly available our tracking of our COVID metrics on our district website. So just wanted to make sure that our community know that there are still mitigations and things that we have in place that we feel continues to allow for a productive, safe school environment that prioritizes in-person learning. One testing update that I would like to call our attention to is that the DuPage County has informed the district that they may begin transitioning tests from the Bionex now to the iHealth Home Test in the near future. They note that this will not impact our clear waiver and that the tests are still very accurate. Additionally, North Shore Clinical has also informed us that they will be transitioning to a nasal swab and very, only and in very rare occasions, exceptions, resorting to the cheek swab. However, I would like to make our parents know, those families that have opted into that testing program, that they will receive a letter from our families. I actually think some of those letters have began to go out, who are participating in our testing program. And with this change, we'll then once again have an opportunity to, to opt out if they so choose. Lastly, I want to, in addition to our vaccination updates, and our data is all available on the website. But lastly, I would like to again reiterate the importance of respect and kindness. We heard many of our community members echo those sentiments tonight, and I appreciate you for doing so. We know that the pandemic has created challenges for all of us. And we will continue to, we will continue to acknowledge the challenges and acknowledge that the pandemic has affected families and individuals in a variety of ways. But with that, as a district, it is so important that we continue to echo the necessity of fostering a climate of respect and acceptance for all community members, regardless of vaccination status or views on masking. We will move forward together with grace and service to our students and to all District 205 families. Finally, it is important that we recognize the hard work of our team members who are working countless hours and behind the scene from our administrators to all of our teachers, to all of our support staff, to all of our, just in the fact that our operations and maintenance and building and ground was out at 2:30 a.m. preparing and shoveling. It truly takes the collective effort of every individual in our school district to have maintained and to continue to maintain the level of excellence we provide each family every single day. And I also would like to honor and to pause and to say thank you to our nurses. Our nurses in particular continue to go above and beyond for every student every day in service to our community. Oftentimes, they receive the brunt of parents that are wondering and are upset or need additional information to understand how to navigate. And sometimes those moments are expressed in moments of frustration and even rage. And our nurses absorb that. And so I want to just pause and say tonight that I am so grateful and so thankful to be a part of Team 205. And in the last two weeks, to have seen and demonstrated their continued commitment, relentless focus to doing and to serving, doing what's best for students and to serving all of our students. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Campbell. Any questions or comments?
Chris?
I just wanted to, I guess, pile on to what Kara had mentioned earlier and Keesa just mentioned, and just thank the, the staff and all the various functions across the district. I think, you know, this week and in particular, you know, you could, I could feel it. I know other parents in the district could feel it, that the focus was on the kids. And there were a lot of potential opportunities to be distracted or have different opinions or, you know, disagree with each other. And, and the district as a whole just didn't, it didn't go there. And the kids have had a good experience in these last few days. And I really appreciate that, and I know we all do. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for their efforts in, in that regard. And hopefully we can keep the momentum going.
Thanks. You know, I, I speak as one of us, right? Like, it is very hard to be in education today. And I just want to take a minute to thank Dr. Campbell for her leadership and stewardship of the district and all of the positivity that has been really ingrained in our schools in a very short period of time. I feel like your tenure here has been longer than it actually has been. And it really speaks to the impact, I mean, I think my stay has been a little bit too, but anyway, let's get back to you. Your impact is felt, and it, and it, it's our staff, a big thank you to our staff, our plant services who show up, who follow the lead, right, who are in it for kids, our nurses who have had a tremendous two years, tremendous years, and are still dealing with their primary goal of trying to educate our community and help support them in a very stressful time for families and kids. And for all the, the staff who welcomed kids with open arms, showed up on Monday, welcomed kids with open arms, and, you know, created an environment that was really reflective of, I think, our, our true goals and values. And I know tonight we heard some stories from community members. And I think that's, that's the call is, one is thank you to everybody. We really, really, I can't even say how much I appreciate the impact that you've all had on our community. But really, when we think about what we need to do next, it's really focusing on rebuilding our community. And this idea that we've been talking about, which is moving forward together, will not happen until everyone starts behaving and treating each other with respect and dignity and acceptance. We don't have to agree with one another, but I can accept where you are, and I can have my own opinion. And that's okay. And that's what we should be teaching our kids. Our kids are watching us, and we see the anger and really big emotions that are out there. But we have to take a turn as a community. This is not who Elmhurst is. This is not why we moved here, what we saw tonight and what we've seen happening over the course of the last two years. So how do we rebuild together? And I think that is, again, through mutual respect, acceptance, and ultimately kindness towards one another. Thank you, everybody, for your time. I thank the people who come and speak to us every, every board meeting and send us emails, staff who reach out. We're getting there. We're getting, we're getting there. We still have a road, but I think we're in a better place. And we're moving forward together. It'll take time, but we'll get there. Thank you, everyone.
Dr. Campbell's talked about what challenging times the past couple of years have been. And you're right, it's been very challenging for everyone, hard to understand a, a lot of the things and the changes, but especially challenging for the children involved. It's even harder for them to understand the reasoning behind every decision and the changes that come their way. And I want to say thank you to our staff and our, our leadership, our administrative team, helping in our buildings to help our kids adapt to all of those changes. I know that a lot of time and energy was spent to help kids who were struggling with having to wear a mask for various reasons. And we made accommodations for them and helped find a way for them to learn through that. And I know that our staff will be helping any students who are struggling now with this pivot and will be helping them if they are worried about the new situation that we have now. So, so our families know that they can reach out and, and get that assistance. I know it's there, and I know our staff is doing everything they can to help our kids through this. And I just ask that at home, we help as well to just talk to our kids. And, you know, it starts at home in talking to them about acceptance and about understanding where somebody else might be coming from and that everybody has different choices to make, and there's different reasons for those. So if we can talk to our kids at home and help them from that aspect as well as they come into school each morning just to be kind and respectful and help each other through all these different changes. all these different changes, that would be great and very much appreciated. So, thank you all.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. All right. Then where are we? We are at Social Media Highlights. So I'm going to preface, this is going to look a little different than we've seen before, so bear with me, I'm going to try and narrate a little bit for the words that may be small, but here. What? No. Hello, Lincoln Families. Today is our first edition of our Moving Forward Monday. As we prepare our journey back to our new building. Today's feature is our flexible seating in our classrooms. You will see photographs of each of the grade levels and the special choices that our teachers... This is Dr. Bren's reading as a special reader at Field. This is Mr. Welton reading at, where was it, Jefferson? Jackson? I can't see. This is a post that Edison did, these two were co-principals for the day. So this is an album that York has put out, the York Album Project, it's their ninth album. It's 12 different students that got together to do it, and it is available to stream on Spotify, Apple Music, and other streaming platforms. And these are Churchville's January Students of the Month. This was a post about our nurses, I thought it was a great post to share how much we love them and how amazing they are. And this next one is because somebody has a birthday coming up. This is our superintendent out visiting a school. Am I getting in trouble for that? That was great. No. Thank you, really, just thank you too for the use of video. I think that that, you know, and even the other presentations, that's really nice, and I think it gives people who don't get to be in schools, you know, if you don't have kids in school, and, you know, they get to see what's going on, and our community that does give, you know, give their tax dollars, they can see what is actually happening in our classrooms, and I think that's fantastic. So thanks for that. All right, anything else? Okay. Oh yeah.
Are you on Board Communications?
Yes, yes I am. Board members present reports and share information to the board.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the York Drama Department, and the play that they put on this past weekend, Ace, it was amazing. And it was the first time in a long time that the kids have performed onstage at York High School because of COVID. So I know they were so excited to be there, and it showed, and it was just a fantastic production. So just wanted to give a shout out to them.
Okay, anything else? All right, we have upcoming meetings, February 22nd, 2022, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock here in District 205 Center. March 2nd, 2022, Board of Education Policy Committee meeting at 5:30 here in District 205 Center. And March 15th, 2022, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7 o'clock here in District 205 Center. We have come to the end of the agenda, if there's nothing else, then we are adjourned.